To the public at hand, I'm going to call the meeting order at four thirty two. And recognizing that we're still waiting for release and which will bring us up to our plan. So I think the agenda looks good. I hadn't registered, but I'm doing the personnel committee. That's okay, we'll get through it.
All right, yeah, well, can we approve the agenda?
Yeah.
Without Louise?
No.
No, I, you know, it's, it's, it's basically a formality unless you're gonna change the agenda.
Right, right, so.
Sort of this kind of situation.
So the next five is minutes. And we can't do that.
Right, so we have to.
So we're gonna jump.
Table until you get a form.
We'll table the minutes until we get a form. So that takes us to public comments. Do we have anyone who would like to make public comments?
Uh, yes, I'll make public comment.
Are you ready?
We're ready.
I just wanna make sure.
Yep.
I don't wanna catch anybody else off guard. Uh, first of all, I wanna say it's good to see that attendance at these meetings continues to be quite good. Definitely not even be able to have enough people to take an action. Certainly summarizes the quality and dedication of this board. And I'm glad that, you know, people are able to see that now because if I remember correctly, our city treasurer said it was fake news or misinformation, that attendance was down so low, and, you know, now people are seeing it for sure. I mean, you're fifty fifty so far this year, Mr. Zentara. I also like to say once again, now, I was gonna say since we have the full board, but since, you know, we don't have the full board, that once again, I don't understand why, and lots of other people don't understand either, why tax dollars are being spent on cheesecake, stuffed strawberries for members of management to send to each other. It just doesn't make any sense to me, and it doesn't make sense to a lot of other people either. Why, when there are a plethora of free webinars, free training, all that stuff, instead we're spending hundreds and thousands of dollars to spend, to send these people in management, and it's almost always management, almost always, that collects these perks, to go out and have hundred dollar dinners, rack up these huge pizza parties, get hotel rooms for their loved ones, and like, this board doesn't bat an eye about it. And it's crazy to me, if the city treasurer has that little regard for the tax dollars as they're used here at the library, what does that say about how our tax dollars are being used over at the city? Because again, we're seeing the tax levy increase, we're seeing temporary tax increases made permanent, we're seeing permanent fees go through the roof, and yet this board is one of the main reasons why. Throwing money down the drain. I think it's time for another big budget cut for the library. If you're able to pour good money into these terrible projects, like, just so as Rick said at one meeting, so that staff members could get a shot in the arm. I don't think people making thirty-six, forty-six, over fifty thousand dollars a year should need a shot in the arm to do their jobs. This is not a heavy labor construction site, this is answering telephones, doing basic customer service, and yet people need a shot in the arm at taxpayer expense and all that. Now, I know Rick is the one who takes the, by far, the most advantage of it, constantly taking advantage of it. But again, I'm just curious, and then again, if you just make, make a, make a statement somewhere and say why you think, why Michael Sexton or Amy Stockwell thinks it's okay to spend taxpayer dollars on cheesecake, exotic olives, can you believe that? Rick Meyer spent tax dollars on gourmet olives, yet the bookshelves downstairs are empty. And again, I, I've had, I've got the email where Rick says, we're not sending books to other libraries for free, they have to pay us that two dollars postage. So when it's a book, something to help the public, Rick Meyer wants no part of doing that for free. But if it's feeding strawberries to Katie Etchison and Alyssa Hinkle, he thinks that's a great idea, at our expense. And none of you have the integrity to, to, to explain why you think it's okay to pay, that we should pay for cheesecake. Plenty of time to defend, you know, Kavanaugh on Facebook and take pictures in random parking lots because you don't like a Hillary bumper sticker, or take selfies in front of Trump Tower, but not enough time to explain to the public why our tax dollars are being wasted? Voters, citizen dedicator, note this silence. Thanks for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay. That takes us to communications from the public.
None.
None, okay. And that takes us to the library's report.
We're getting back up to minutes now.
We will circle away from back and, love the coat, by the way.
Love you. It's a goldback.
I have my mustache on.
Sorry about that.
Okay. Um, we're going to circle back to a few little minutes and I can answer anything of issue. So if there aren't any corrections to the minutes, then we'd like to entertain a motion to approve the minutes that is written.
You approve.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, minutes were approved. That takes us to the library's report.
Just get to the charts. I, I guess I give you fewer this month because in a couple weeks I'm gonna be giving you the, the annual report, uh, which will have a lot more, a better picture of twenty nineteen.
Do we have to approve the agenda, just as a?
As a formality?
Right.
Okay. Oh, go ahead. Um, so.
You approve the agenda?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
So, uh, December wasn't too bad. We had, uh, if you look at it by audience, circulation by audience, that's, that's the first one. Uh, number of children's materials loan, you can see that December twenty nineteen was quite a bit better. Total materials loan, slightly better. It's about a one point four percent increase overall. The children's materials up sixteen percent from last December. That's crazy good. Uh, if you look at it by material type, uh, it's, it's, so this one doesn't include electronic materials, and that we've got essentially unchanged from last year. Total, total difference in these six items. So that's, you know, February and December were much better than I projected, so that helped the overall numbers, and I'll get those to you guys in a couple of weeks, but it helped the overall numbers quite a bit. Uh, if you look at the change in circulation by audience, you can see that it's, it's young adult materials is way, way down, almost twenty-one percent. Uh, adult materials down just a little bit, and children's materials up quite a lot. By material type, this is a little misleading because this, because of the scale, uh, that other items loan is a huge increase percentage wise, but the raw numbers are still pretty small.
Yeah.
Uh, so it looks a lot more impressive than it actually is. Electronic resources for December. So again, the difference here, that's six, that one on top, successful retrieval of electronic information, that's like database use, that's stuff that, that patrons access that doesn't have a due date. So you access a document and you download it or you print it off. Orders of electronic class, like, uh, GEO resources or something like that. So, uh, the use of circulating electronic materials, think Hoopla and Library on the Go, Canopy, those are things that, that expire. So Canopy at seventy-two hours, and if the, if the patron accesses it after seventy-two hours, the same, the same film, that's considered another, another circulation. That's up quite a bit. I, I am going to look at the, the variable, we're seeing this length decrease lately in successful retrieval of electronic information, and I think that the wildcard is, uh, we've got a database called Novelist that was reporting us some gaudy numbers last year. We've had, we've had reports from them of tens of thousands of uses, and it was under a thousand this month. In fact, the tens of thousands was not accurate.
Yeah.
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna pull out that outlier and see who does. So circulation wise, not a great month, but, but, you know, we've at least treaded water.
Um, before we leave that, just a couple of comments. One is, you know, when you're talking about the circulating electronic materials, you know, that Libby changed their period of time that a, that an item is open, so it's, it's quite a bit shorter, so you essentially, you know, it's gone from, I think it was ten days or fourteen days to five days.
I'm still, I, I'm debating on whether we wanna continue with Library on the Go, Libby was the app for, for Library on the Go. If we can find a way to migrate our purchased materials into another format, I think I would be in favor of that. I, I'd find a lot of problems with it.
It, you know, it's fine for what it is, I just understand it's limited. And then, uh, just a comment, and you know, I'm, I'm starting to harp on this consistently, I, I hope we can find ways to promote specific databases with custom programs.
Yes, sir.
Rather than the databases as a whole, doing something related to some interesting thing, the resource we have.
It's a good idea, yeah.
Like, well, Kim, I, you know, I was thinking about, clearly when you talked about the new, um, music thing, which would, you know, lend itself to a particular audience that might be interested in that, who wouldn't be interested in Gale Research?
Um, yeah, and those are all things that we've got, we've got some, and we'll talk more probably at PPPR committee next month about it, but we've got a lot, there are a lot of initiatives that work right now, and works right now. Uh, Michael and Sophia are gonna join us for a brainstorming session on ways to increase circulation. So, uh, again, I'm moving on to the narrative portion.
Just, just a question. What is page two? Is this, this twelve month period, is this consistent with recent other twelve month periods?
Well, this isn't a twelve month period, this is just for December compared to last year.
Oh, it's just December?
Yeah, yeah. I'll, I'll be giving you the annual, the annual figures are, are in this, but I'll be giving it to you in a visual, more visual format in the annual report that I hope to have to you in a couple of weeks.
All right.
No, it's okay. Uh, so as far as the narrative portion, so you've seen for months I've been pulling around here, Becky Dance and I have been working on records, new book projects, we're about two days from putting, uh, the final touches on it, getting, getting our application to ensure records sent off to the state, and once we get the okay from them, then we will be, you'll see a lot fewer boxes in my office, compact boxes of stuff. Uh, let's see, uh.
But this is a retirement fund, for retiring records, is that?
Well, uh, the, the local records, uh.
Or they go someplace and are archived?
No, uh, there's, there are some that we archive, there's, that's why I'm working with Becky on. So there are, there are some that she finds of, of, even though the state says we can destroy them after a certain amount of time, that we think those are historical value. Those are gonna go down to the local history. The rest of the things that we, once we get the official permission from the state, we will disure.
Okay.
Yes.
Makes sense.
Um, let's see what I, this is a, this is a fairly uneventful month, December. Carol Melissa, to the TEDx Women, uh, got a lot of positive feedback, attendance wasn't really helpful, but we did get a lot of positive feedback, and then something that Amy and I talked a bit about, uh, before the meeting, I was pointing out Tabitha Bilyeu, who's a part-time librarian, and Susan, who's a library assistant, are working with the Crossing to develop a partnership, and specifically the rehab center. And they're also reaching out to other, um, assisted living facilities to work on circulating collections. So, in other words, where we prepare a collection for them, the institution checks it out, and then checks it out to their residents, and then they bring it back, and then we give them a collection. So I think this is a, that's a pretty exciting initiative. Tabitha is working on grant applications through ALA, get some funding for the, the one, Crossing.
Well, I, I just, I think that's, that's fantastic because it is, it is an amazing facility, and, um, the, the sort of way that they're approaching things of trying to get people working together and building partnerships within the facility is, is really, I'm really glad that the library's committed parts of that.
So we had Bill Beneteca in to recalibrate the people counter on our security gate. They had it cranked up, the sensitivity cranked up really high, so they were probably counting everybody who walked by and near it. Uh, so we were probably getting an inflated count. So we, you, you remember that, so we put the new people counter at the entrance, and we were getting smaller numbers from the entrance than we were from the security gate. Well, we randomly, a few times, checked the, the, the door one, the new one, and you can see it in real time, you can, it's, it's got a video portion of it, you can see the people come in, and you can see the counter go.
Okay.
And it looked like it was doing a pretty good job. So we, we got Bill Beneteca in, they recalibrated it, and they also recommended we try a couple of other things. The recalibration helped, uh, that they suggested that we move, uh, one of the planters, well, moving the planter helped a lot. So it's getting, it's getting closer, so we'll probably move the other planter, uh, in the near future and see if we get a, you know, we should, we should get numbers that are fairly close, but I would expect that the lobby entrance number would be higher than the security gate. And I think, uh, it's important to note that, uh, the, we have a lot of volunteers in the local history, about twenty twenty-one volunteers. Friends financed a volunteer appreciation dinner for them right before Christmas at the Tuscan, and almost, almost everyone, the volunteers, came to it, and it was, it was well appreciated.
Before we leave that, just two things I also thought were especially interesting. One is that, um, um, your circulation for, for, I'm not sure what Carol's title is, but that she's assisting other departments and they're continuing that, that cross fertilization. And the other thing I thought that was very interesting was the, uh, your turnover rate on the displays is really.
Eighty-five percent for a month.
So you think to increase that would really?
Yeah, and they don't, you know, they don't choose high demand items to put on those displays, so it's a, it's a nice way to feature worthwhile stuff that sometimes can get buried in a collection.
And we're visual people, you know, we, we respond to something that we see and piques our interest, so.
So program goes down slightly, uh, and oftentimes that means, uh, more or less ridiculous performance as compared to the last year, and that was the case in this, in this town. So that's good for anywhere from a hundred to three hundred attendees.
Okay. Okay, I think we're on to reports of committees. And so I'm going to report on the Personnel Policy and Public Relations Committee, and you get in your packet the FOIA, the FOIA requests for December. Um, I don't know, anything, there is information over there. Um, let's see, personnel update, I'll have.
Yeah, well, we still have two halftime openings yesterday, sent over the official request for personnel to City's HR Department, we got a halftime page opening, there's a registry for that. Did you make your decision today?
Uh, no, we have to, we have to post it, I'm not supposed to post it, so.
Officially?
Oh, in the internal postings, yeah. So it would be a step down for anybody, so it's probably, that's probably not gonna happen, but then we'll, uh, when, if, when we don't get any internal postings, then we go to the registry and we choose somebody for registration. I think there are, what, three people in the registry?
Uh, three people.
Okay. So assuming that one of them taken, then we're done, if we, if none of them want to go any more, then we go to the public. With the other positions, a halftime library assistant posting, and we had some, I need to talk to Penny about that and see where we are, and then we'll change the, the application process a little bit, because that one we don't have registry for, but both, the, the formal requests that they made.
Okay. Um, equity diversion, diversity and inclusion, uh, we're still looking at how to kind of leverage that and get that going, and some special task force to kind of move that, help move that forward.
Yeah, we still, we talked to Division Ed today about forming a diversity committee, we've got, uh, some staff members named for that, I would like to see, uh, Donna, if you could appoint, it doesn't have to be today, but if you could appoint a trustee, uh, because Strategic Planning calls for increasing diversity of staff, boards, and volunteers. So we've got a, a volunteer who's gonna serve on the committee, uh, and their initial charge is going to be brainstorming ways to, to better recruit, uh, to advance diversity of staff through recruitment, but eventually we talk about retention. I'm not gonna serve on that committee, I'm just gonna listen to that committee, Robert is gonna be the, the chair.
Okay. If it asks for anybody who's, might have interest, we'll, we can always discuss it offline. Okay, volunteer policy, we're still reviewing the volunteer policy, um, and we're not quite ready to.
Yeah, the big questions were about background checks, did you record your background checks? I still, I'm, I'm meeting with a, a group of library directors from Central Illinois tomorrow in Springfield, and I'm gonna kind of paper brain as to how they approach this.
For volunteers. We had discussions about whether you'd need different types of background checks for different areas of volunteering, and things like that.
This is the current policy as of two thousand seventeen?
Correct.
Okay.
And are there other big questions you're looking at?
Uh, no, that's, that's the main one, it's, and then, you know, we've gotta, we've gotta do a better job of forcing a volunteer policy.
So what comes first, a volunteer wanting to serve, or do you need someone to do something?
Depends, yeah. I mean, you know, we do have a lot of people just coming, saying, hey, are there any opportunities?
Okay.
Uh, we have, coming up next month, right in our Madden Auditorium, Dove is gonna be sponsoring a volunteer fair, which will be a good place to recruit volunteers.
Is there anybody else down, does it need, is the volunteer volunteer?
No. No, it, it just depends on what department the volunteer is gonna be, is gonna be serving in.
Okay.
So are we gonna have tables at the, at the Dove thing?
I, I, I hope so, I just said, Becky's the one most in need in, in local history right now of, of volunteers, so I forwarded that to her today that I, to apply for a booth in it.
And you have a friend?
Yeah, I should order it onto them as well.
I feel like it's gone, I'm waiting for Stephanie. Okay. Public relations and marketing plan, uh, we.
Yeah, I did put the plan in the, in the packet because it was a plan that was rejected by you guys, uh, last year, I just wanted you to have a copy of it for your, uh, your records, I wanted to make sure everybody had a copy, so there's not a copy in the packet.
But you didn't send it out?
I sent, I sent it out to you so that, so that you had one to refer to.
Right.
Uh, you know, I didn't wanna, I, I didn't wanna confuse the issue because you guys already said no to that plan, but we, we talked about the possibility of using that as a starting point for developing our own plan versus the possibility of consulting again, and I don't think we came to a.
Right, we, we kind of, I think the big issue was changing the name of the library, it was really kind of big stumbling block.
That was the main, the main reason you guys said no to the plan, and we didn't get a second draft, so, uh, but I thought we might still be able to glean from it some of this stuff.
Yeah. I think a lot of it is pretty basic, you know, I mean, I won't actually say pretty basic, but, you know, the kind of fundamental, uh, you know, publicity and outreach marketing plans that you would have for any organization, so. There were certainly a lot of good things to that. Changing the name, gotten a little, a little bit personal.
Where's the graphic that, um, shows the progress on this?
That, that was, yeah, that one, I, I'm just kinda sending you quarterly unless you want it more often, but, uh, but, uh, what we discussed in committee last month was possible revisions to the plan. Uh, we didn't come up with a, any firm recommendations at this point, but we got pretty far through it. Uh, we also, uh, I gave the committee a copy of the implementation plan, which I just told Donna it's in much better shape than I thought it was, if I, if I do again, to it, and there are a lot of things that are in progress and that, uh, that are important to you, so I'll have a, I'll have a stronger update for you next month. And then probably will come to, the committee will come to some firm recommendations for revisions to the strategic plan.
Where do we go next, where do our new focus points become?
Some things are, are, some things are already accomplished, so why not just take them off, and there's some other things that are not perhaps the priorities that we thought they were, or just, or just immeasurable, unfeasible.
Yeah, or the landscape has changed.
So rather than, uh, continuing to have the exact same plan, we're gonna be recommending some revisions to it.
Right, which is good, you have a dynamic. Yeah. Okay, so that was, that was, uh, item six, which is the teacher plan, and, um, that took us to the end of Public, uh, Personnel Policy and Public Relations Committee. That takes us on to the Finance and Properties Committee.
Um, we met, and, um, just some of the highlights, so, um, one of the things talking about is, even though we're the tenant, and we know that it's the landlord's responsibility, uh, looking at a list of long-term capital needs, just so we can understand, picture we're offering, and I know that Brad and his group is working on that, so we're still , we'll be interested to see it when he gets, um, there. I'd say that there's been no, no further work on space planning, although Rick did bring out a grant that's being, that is potentially available, and Rick and Edward are both, um, Rick and Robert are both, um, working on that, I understand there's an April deadline or something.
Right, we talked about a committee, uh, and, uh, Sophia and.
Somebody we can't remember what's.
Yeah, so, well, I'll look into their, but, but.
I thought it was a TBD that you were gonna, it was a TBD after the meeting.
After the meeting.
Yeah, that you were gonna, you were gonna point somebody after the meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's what I, that's kinda what I remember, too.
Okay.
So those were the main items, then we, uh, we discussed the check register, it was a very busy month here for the staff because of the purchase of a great deal of, um, library materials, we talked about some specific things, including, um, new databases, updates of many of our subscriptions. My understanding is that the only travel on this, um, check register was previously approved, uh, mileage for Dr. Angora to go to the, uh, seminar in Chatham, and this also, in addition to the information, we also get bonus points from one of the state requirements we need to do.
Right, it checks off a box for the, uh, per capita grant that I submitted Tuesday.
So fifty-five dollars and ninety-one cents, so the committee recommended that the board approve the check register for the month of December.
Okay. Is there any questions on the check register, if anybody has, like, is that, I guess that's who you could ask, right?
Oh, yeah, yes, I guess, yes, I guess, you recommend that we.
Okay.
I guess I, I make that, I guess I make the right. I guess I, I make that, I guess I make the question right.
Not second. So we'll go around the room and ask. Aye?
Aye.
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 Thank you. And then the other thing that we looked at was Rick kind of prepares a sort of simplified current operations report. This is now not exactly, but almost the end of the year. There's still some accounting matters again. Revenue exceeded expenses. Everything met budget and cash flow position is very strong, I understand. And this also includes a transfer to the reserves. Capital reserves we discussed several times this year, we've taken action on. So that is included for your information. Property tax receipts were great. And in addition, some of the other items of revenue were higher than budget. So that was, that was great. The all-important personnel category was, so payroll and benefits were below budget. And so a good year.
Yeah, materials we went slightly over budget. Grants were, ventures were under budget. Office supplies maintenance was over. Staff development was well under budget. It was a good year and we ended up in a good place.
And once again, you know, the way that you've been taking a flexible approach to staffing, encouraging job sharing, being cautious about hiring, all that is a big contributor.
Well, yeah, that's the, you know, communicate the staff about when you come, when you come up in the plaque, the first thing what they want to know is why are we adding more? And it's because you don't know what's coming, like a forty-one percent increase. You do it incrementally. You do it in small steps because when you, you don't, you can't necessarily predict a big increase in health insurance costs and IFRF costs and things like that, so.
Well, of course, we don't know what the census is going to say, but.
Yeah, and that won't have a, that won't have a huge impact.
But in, in terms of the general economic picture, this is not a contributor that is growing.
Correct. And so this will be the, I think, thirty-year running that we kept the levy exactly the same. So that's.
Yeah. Okay, that, that's all my report.
I, I, I have something for, for others that's.
Building related?
Just as an FYI. So over the weekend, on Saturday, we had a, we had a sewer backup. It was handled very well by Civic Center staff and library staff. Special shout out to Stephanie, she worked very hard. And they've, Serp Pro came in because when you get water, air-based boards and things like that, you want to make sure everything's sanitary.
Right. Where was it?
It was in a staff area. It was, it was back behind circulation. So we have, there's a couple of restrooms back there and that's, that's where they backed up. And then Verdict was in today and had the camera down in the pipes and found some blockage that's going to get taken care of. So, but again, Civic Center staff handled it very, very well and, you know, I'm embarrassed to say I don't know Stephanie's last name, but I just, she, she worked her tail off, so.
So it wasn't related to the rain or something?
It was. I mean, I, I mean, you know, I think that's.
It's undetermined.
Yeah, I mean, I suppose in the old parts of town, it's hard to tell where the storms are.
I mean, I imagine indirectly.
Well, I, keep in mind, there was a time when we, if we got a quarter inch of rain, we were going to get some water in this building. So things are, are much better. Right after, right before we officially opened the local history room, we had a backup. There's a mechanical closet just on the other side of it. We had water shooting up three feet out of the, out of the straight pipe, out of the sand pipe. And it was just incredible. And that, it was five o'clock on Friday and staff, I think almost everybody stayed and worked on it and we got Serp Pro in. And this was before city on the building. And we didn't have any damage to the local history, but it was a, it was a.
Nail biter.
Nail biter, yeah. Problem issues are always stressed. Okay. That takes us on to foundation. We will appeal.
Uh, we're, we're standing at roughly eight thousand dollars right now. I had initially reported it was closer to eleven thousand dollars and that was a, a living database of, a total of eleven thousand dollars in donations to the foundation for the year, but they, only eight thousand came directly from the annual appeal. So, and I also want to add that I, I got the demographics in and we will be updating the donor board for a hundred and eighty-five dollars. So we're going to put some names to add, there's some names to move from one category to another.
Great. Are there, are we going to do anything special to commemorate that once it gets done?
Once what gets done?
Once the sign gets changed? I mean, like have a, I don't know, have, invite those people in that look at their beautiful sign?
I would think if you're going to do that, that you just have one for everybody donated in smaller section. I, I would do that. I've, I've been in contact with one donor, the loan, no. But I definitely can inform the other donors. I mean, it's, we're talking about one organization, two people who are deceased, and then, so we're talking about.
One.
We're talking about, we're talking about two, two couples. And, and, and an organization which we've already done, that was a Norfolk Southern Grant, and a few others.
A, a letter, okay, a letter and a picture maybe?
Yeah.
A picture with a sign, you know?
Yeah, and I know, because one, one, one donor, it said, you know, he came and asked me, what, what's the, how do I get my name on there? And I told him and by golly, that was John, done.
Oh, John, yeah. Oh, good, yeah.
I ran into Barbara yesterday and told her, it's coming. I didn't know, what's your name?
Yeah, well, I mean, yeah, that'd be nice, a letter and a picture and a sign. How, how much did the foundation use last?
This, yeah, it was about five last year, I would say. The year before was better.
The first time?
Yeah, I think the year before we got a ten thousand dollar donation from one, one individual, so.
See, that's, that's just sending a letter out.
Yeah, and it's, it's repetition too.
Exactly.
People getting the habit of.
Right.
Okay. That takes us down to friends of the library. And the friends of the library met last week and they're in the process of reorganizing their paid position for, into two positions, treasurer and secretary, which of course leads to, and so now at this point they're, they're struggling, they're struggling with the usual issues that not-for-profits have, like dealing with the books and, and dealing with the membership list, the classic problems that everybody has. But they did approve funding for, they approved funding for a tournament of books, baby talk, ridiculous T-shirts. And there was a lot of discussion about adding the Friends logo to the T-shirts and they voted to actually approve more than was originally requested so they could get their, their logo on the, on the shoulder, which is fun. That, I think it's cool. This is, and this, I guess this is for the junior ridiculous camp, which is actually like training, you know, the ridiculous people of the future. So it's a good opportunity for children. I know my daughter just loves that kind of puppet show type of stuff. And they approved the staff appreciation events. And, so John Shirley is doing Warlords for Books Between Bikes on February fifth. And there has been an average attendance of forty-eight at the Books Between Bikes events. And they're working on revising their bylaws, which have been neglected for a while, another common problem, not-for-profits. And we had a lot of good discussion at the end about just general topics, about reaching out to large companies, about, you know, partnering with them for library services and engaging with some diversity committees, like at ADM. Had one suggestion for a cooking class. I'm waiting for the cooking class. So there was a lot of good, oh, and assisting irregrats and assimilation. So I thought that was, a lot of good comments from our friends, Drew. And.
They, I, I ran into three people on the Friends board today who wanted to, wanted to convey, wanted me to convey to you that they thought your trustees report was asking, they really appreciated the little detail and so.
They are a great group and I was, I was totally impressed with them, so. And that's it for Friends of the Library. And let's see, that takes us to Illinois Hartland Library System, no report, old business, trustee fax file.
Yeah, I got good feedback from a good number of you on that. The reason we had to look at those chapters in the trustee fax file was it was a grant, per capita grant requirement for this year. I was able to take what you guys discussed and, you know, fulfill that requirement of the, of the grant. And honestly, everything that was, that, all the feedback I got from you guys on that was stuff we've been talking about in the last few meetings. Stuff about, you know, developing a marketing plan, PR plan, things about advocacy and fundraising. So, you know, I don't know that further discussion is, is required at this point specifically about those. Those are things that are going to be on our, on our topic and, on our plate for the next year. And, you know, I think that, that it sort of led us to refocusing on the, on the strategic planning, which we got staff kind of fired up about several, about several initiatives right now, so.
That's cool.
It's very, that's very good.
Always good to step back and reassess, we get, that was too close to us. Okay, we have to approve the twenty, twenty-one meeting schedule. And we have in front of us.
A meeting on July second, two thousand and nineteen.
Oh, is that? Oh. I missed it. Okay. Yes. We'll get that changed. Yes.
I'm moved that we adopt the three schedules with the, with the correction on the personal policy and public relations committee July date as presented.
Sir.
All in favor?
Aye.
That will be published for you, by interested parties and ourselves. Although most of us already have it in our electronic calendars, so, like, or weekly year, boom. Serving our public standards for all our public libraries.
There's, there's, there's one other item there on the committee.
Oh, okay.
The, the bylaws require election of officers at the annual meeting next month. So we've, we've done this any number of ways, but the most frequent, because the bylaws don't say how you do it, but the most frequent is a nominating committee of one or two who come up with a slate to introduce at the annual meeting. I think last year's nominating committee was Mark Sworzen.
Right.
So sometimes we've had two, sometimes one person. So and typically the president just appoints that committee.
Okay. So.
What's the action? Just the nomination, or the, excuse me, the appointment of that committee. It doesn't even have to be the, the, the don, the don needs to, to appoint a nominating committee of one or two.
Okay.
Not right now?
Yeah.
Oh, right now?
Because, because that slate has to be ready for the, for the annual meeting next month.
Okay.
And, I.
I'd be glad to help if that's, if this part of it too, do you want to do it?
No, I think you would be great.
Oh, no, I thought you would, I'll, I'll, I'll be.
Okay, we'll work together.
Just let me know when and we'll, we'll do it.
Yeah, and just, just, you could just sometime, no later than forty-eight hours before the annual meeting, which is the same day as the full board meeting, let me know the slate and.
So in parallel, we start out by asking folks to please continue with their excellent job that they're performing. And that's where we started from. And let's see.
Let's, we'll talk about.
Okay, we'll talk about.
The officers are elected, the liaisons and the committee chairs are appointed. But the officers are elected, so that will be, will be a slate for it.
So the officers are?
The officers are president, vice president and secretary. So that's Donna, Samantha, the vice president, Louis, the secretary.
Okay. Michael, we'll get together on that and.
Okay. Just let me know when we will.
I'm a little rusty on the mechanics of it.
Yeah, typically the VP is considered the, the, the president. The person who is the incoming, the incoming president and so, but it doesn't, there's nothing in the bylaws that requires that, but it's, but we do have to have the election of officers at the annual meeting, so.
Okay, very good. So we'll be in touch on that and that takes us to serving our public.
So the governance and administration checklist, if you look at, at simply the checklist, that's all very easily met. One of the recommendations that, you know, we can do better on and, and probably the best way to do that is to maybe once a year have a, and that is, and that is continuing education of trustees. And probably the most effective way to do that is through some sort of presentation in a meeting maybe once a year. Although they do recommend, when possible, that, let's see, so the governance administration standard number six is whoever provides financial support for trustee membership in ILA and ALA, some of you are, some of you aren't, as well as trustee attendance at workshops and conferences when physically possible. I think that the main advantage for individual memberships in either ILA or ALA is you get a pretty substantial discount if you attend a conference. Aside from that, you can get access to, with our institutional membership, you can get access to, to most of the other perks. But other than that, we, you know, that's, that's one that we could do better on and at least once, at least one annual training per, for every trustee every year. That's something we could just fold into making. Any questions or comments on that?
This is pretty streamlined and straightforward.
Yeah.
List.
We, you know, we're, we're doing a really good job of. We, you know, we're, I, we're doing a really good job of, of reviewing the, all the policies every three years, so that was something that we had to work on, because some policies hadn't been hooked up for a number of years, but I think, I think everything now is in the rotation.
It's always easy to look at the system.
Okay, one, one, are we done with that?
Yeah.
Just one question I wanted to ask, in the, because I can't remember the conversation of trustee.
Oh, yeah, uh, I had talked to, uh, I don't know, we're, what you last knew, Bob Smith, decided to, for family reasons, decided not to, and, uh, so I talked to the mayor about, uh, I asked her about Stacy Young, and she, she thought she would be good. Last I heard, she's interested. I don't know where, where it's gone from there. I don't know, if you know Stacy, she's, uh, she's, uh, public relations at here.
Is it all got a, in part?
Yeah, she does serve in part.
Okay.
Good, good addition. She's, she's interested, so, so she would be coming, um, when?
When the mayor appoints her.
When she's appointed, approved by, approved by city council.
Okay, okay.
Uh, you know, provided that she's, that she's still interested. I, it was almost two weeks ago that, that I heard that she was.
And that seat, that seat's term expires when?
Uh, in, so that would be, it would have been in twenty nineteen, so the twenty nineteen to twenty-two, so the twenty twenty-two is when, uh, that seat would expire.
So it's, it's almost a full term?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, very good.
All right, all right.
Motion to adjourn, if we're ready for that.
So moved.
Such a, a favorable.
Aye.
We're cush, cush.